And I just want to remind everyone that this, this may be a fairly new topic for some. And so we tried putting together several speakers to bring the council up to speed in this area. But we can absolutely bring in more speakers, have more conversation, whatever additional research may be helpful. We're just here to assist in, in the council setting such a goal. The second item we'll, we'll talk about was also discussed on council in the need for more communications from and through our neighborhood associations. So that's the agenda for this morning. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okie doke. Let's, who's going to start out, Scott?
Jeremy.
All right, Jeremy, let's go ahead and get started with you. And give us sort of an update on what's going on. This is important work. And Jeremy has been working with everybody from the task force to our city staff to figure out ways that we can improve the performance of our buildings. And quite frankly, thank you for leading this discussion this morning, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep.
All right. Council and Mayor, thank you for your time today. We appreciate the opportunity to convene this group of stakeholders and to provide insights on how we can move towards the goals laid out by the resolution. I'd like to start out by noting that success towards meeting existing and future goals will hinge on the policies and actions we implement during the next three to five years. The climate hazards that Des Moines has experienced, for example, riverine flooding, the more intense rainstorms of the last several years, and extended heat waves and rising temperatures will continue to increase with intensity. And even after emissions stabilize, it could take decades, if not longer, to see these trends reverse. In other words, what we do now, or what we fail to do now, our children and grandchildren cannot change. They do have a chance to improve upon whatever success we can achieve. So I encourage us all to think about how we can do more good rather than less bad. Looks like my slides, there we go. All right. Based on the latest 2020 resident survey, residents were least satisfied with the city's progress toward reducing greenhouse gas emissions, followed closely by dissatisfaction with the city's efforts to conserve energy, both community-wide and within city facilities. To continue to reduce emissions, we need to create an energy master plan for our community. And this resolution helps set the stage for that process. This will help us understand our energy resource mix in order to use it more efficiently. Ambitious targets will lead to insights that inform planning, action, and creative solutions. Reducing emissions and expanding renewables provides significant non-energy benefits to our city as well. Reduced air pollution, which decreases instances of asthma and heart disease and other serious health problems, and helps reduce healthcare costs. It also creates an opportunity to address systemic inequalities that have forced vulnerable populations, especially communities of color, to bear the brunt of climate impacts and environmental and economic injustice. And it also ensures that we do not prioritize short-term savings over long-term prosperity, ignoring the cost to the environment and our community's well-being. Ultimately, think of it as an investment in our future. Renewable energy creates good-paying local jobs and provides greater economic and energy security for the city. It feeds investment back into the local economy and drives innovation in technologies and business. It's also attractive to national and international businesses. Think Google and Microsoft and Facebook, who have invested in the Des Moines metro. After all, affordable clean energy is what attracted them here in the first place. By percentage, Des Moines is growing faster than its Midwest peers. Last year's population growth continues the long-term trend for the MSA. Projections have the MSA nearing a population of 1 million in coming years. This increased concentration of people and resources will place a greater emphasis on how we use and where we get our energy. It's going to take a multifaceted approach that includes multiple solutions from energy efficiency to renewable energy, the electrification of buildings and vehicles, and a host of other solutions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Given what we faced as a community and state this year, ultimately, we could all just use something positive to work towards together. So why should Des Moines lead? Cities are on the front line of climate change. The actions we take locally have the greatest potential to build momentum and create change. Simply put, it's just good governance. Cities across the country and the Midwest continue to partner with their local utilities to set and achieve aggressive targets. Just two days ago, the UN Secretary General Antonio Guterres called on the US and local governments to do everything we can to curb emissions quickly, calling the state of our planet broken. He cited three imperatives. We need to achieve carbon neutrality within the next three decades. We need to align economies and finance behind the Paris Agreement, and we need to deliver breakthroughs in energy and climate adaptation. President-elect Joe Biden has made climate policy a key national security priority and has pledged to rejoin the Paris Climate Accord on day one of taking office. Mayor County has been elected interim president of ICLI Global, a convening body bringing together local governments for sustainability on the international stage. And he has worked for years towards ambitious climate commitments on the global stage as well, as nationally and locally. And we need to finalize and adopt those commitments. Over 240 US cities have committed to 100% clean electricity goals, ranging from as early as 2022 to 2050. We can do the same. Leading by example is what we do, whether that's on a list of best places to live, top-ranked city in affordability, a best city to pursue a STEM career, or best city for health and well-being. We can also be a best city for sustainable communities and renewable energy as well. Our presenters today come to the workshop with their own experiences of pursuing, advocating for, or implementing renewable energy and emissions reductions projects. I think we have assembled diversity of local perspectives here with the same overall goal in mind, improving our city. This workshop is intended to provide counsel with background information and guidance to inform the creation of renewable energy and emissions reductions targets that align with global agreements and best practices, and that meet or exceed those adopted by other cities. Translating the ideas presented today into action is contingent on sound policy drivers and bold but achievable goals. The other presenters here today will provide more detail on what it will take to get us there. Here's the agenda for today. First up will be Mid-American. It's hard to ignore the wind and solar farm installations we see throughout the state. Many of those turbines were installed by Mid-American Energy and demonstrate their great progress on that front. Most of those projects probably weren't easy and at times probably didn't seem feasible. But each of them is a success story now. Next up, we have the Iowa Environmental Council, an organization that is a Tyler's advocate educator and coalition builder around issues related to clean energy, climate, water, and land use. And then we have Willdan. As a critical energy services and engineering consultancy for many of Iowa's local governments, utilities, schools, and businesses, they provide technical expertise on practical solutions to get us to 100% renewable energy and zero emissions across multiple sectors. And then finally, we'll conclude with perspectives from the city's residents and the local business. Heather Christensen will represent the Task Force on Sustainability. And Kemen Industries, where she's the sustainability coordinator, and she's also an urban ambassador. I would also like, I would not ask that in the interest of time, we try to keep discussion and questions to the end of presentations today.
Yep, Jeremy, we do have one hand up before we get started. Joe, do you want to quickly jump in and follow your lead?
Mayor, if you want me to wait until the end, I just had a question about the first slide that he showed. But if you want me to wait until the end, I can.
All right, let's, let's go ahead then. Go ahead, Jeremy. Thank you.
Okay. So here are just a few key terms that you will likely hear today. This slide is for reference. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But I think I can speak for the presenters today. If there's a definition or something you need clarification on, please don't hesitate to ask. We spend all day dealing with these terms and not everybody else does. So I just wanted to touch quickly on international agreements and policy. International policy is driven by the Paris Climate Agreement, and the accord will celebrate its fifth anniversary on December 12th in just a few short days. Subsequent annual meetings throughout the world have pushed the policy goals established in Paris further. You can see here that the most current goals are 45% greenhouse gas emissions reduction by 2030 and 100% by 2050. And then I just wanted to touch briefly on the international or the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which was established in 1988 by the UN and assesses climate change based on the latest science. Thousands of experts from around the world combine the most recent developments in science, adaptation, vulnerability, and mitigation, and lay out the process that we need to follow to meet, to meet global, or to keep global temperatures below 1.5 degrees Celsius. A key fact of the IPC is that it's a partnership between scientists and policymakers. It is why their work is a credible source of information for policymakers like you. And then on the national level, we are still in, as just an example of one group, that supports climate action signed by more than 3,900 mayors, governors, CEOs, tribal leaders, and other executives. The organizations they represent combine the largest and most diverse coalition of stakeholders supporting climate action in the United States, and they represent just one of many national organizations and partners that continue to demonstrate leadership on energy and emissions reduction. As I mentioned earlier, the Office of President-elect Joe Biden is currently assembling a team of climate leaders, and his policy agenda is clear: carbon-free electric utilities by 2035, investments in advanced modern infrastructure, a transition to all-electric vehicles by as early as 2032 for new vehicles, and that's already supported by a number of automakers, investments in clean energy innovation, and securing environmental justice and opportunity. And then I just want to touch quickly on what cities are doing. So currently, one in three Americans live in a jurisdiction committed to 100% clean electricity. According to ICLI, over 240 cities have committed to 100% clean electricity goals. In the Midwest alone, over 45 cities have partnered with their local utilities to pursue 100% clean electricity goals. And those include Minneapolis, Lawrence, Kansas, St. Louis, Traverse City, and Kansas City, among others. We aren't alone in Iowa. Other cities have set similar or more aggressive emissions targets, but for energy, we all are falling a little behind. There are currently, from what I can tell, no cities in Iowa that are leading the way in this area. That means that over zero in 3 million Iowans currently don't live in a city committed to 100% electricity. We can do better. So I just wanted to talk about Des Moines leadership real quick. Guide DSM, Plan DSM, and the city's other major planning and policy efforts signal a commitment to sustainable communities. The city's current goal for greenhouse gas reductions is 28% over 2008 levels by 2025. And I'm happy to report we are well on the way to that. I'm currently working with students from U and I to update our greenhouse gas inventory and hope to have that completed by the end of the year. And the trends look good for meeting that goal, but we haven't set goals for beyond that date. So we need to think about doing that now. The city's also made real progress in renewables itself and currently has over 743 KW, kilowatts of solar energy installed or coming online in the near future. We've installed EV charging stations throughout the city and are developing policies to be EV-ready while pursuing grant opportunities to help fund these projects. And more recently, the Renewable Gas Project at Water Reclamation Authority is a recent success, and I encourage those in attendance to visit the city's website, watch the video, and learn more about this project. It recovers energy from wastewater treatment and will generate an estimated $3 million in annual revenue for the city and offset the natural gas demands of over 5,500 homes. In closing, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to convene this important group of stakeholders today. And I hope I have helped guide our discussion. With that, I'll turn it over to Mid-American Energy and the rest of today's presenters to get, give you more detail. Thank you.
All right, this is Catherine. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep.
Yes. Your notes are on one side, Catherine. I don't know if you mean to have that, but.
Nope, did it now gone, correct?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, good morning, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss how Mid-American Energy and the city of Des Moines can continue to be partners and work together, which we've done for decades. And thanks, Jeremy, for recognizing that and for others along the way to help meet your energy goals. So first and foremost, it's very clear that we share the city's goals of lowering emissions and seeing the city grow sustainably. In fact, we've made more progress in developing renewable energy generation than any other rate-regulated utility in the country. Being a good steward of the environment is part of our environmental respect core principle. So let's just start where we've been and where we are going together as your utility partner. So as you know, Mid-American announced our 100% renewable energy vision in 2016. And this slide shows you that pathway for the future and our elevated goal of producing more and more renewable energy for the benefit of every customer. And we have also started our Green Advantage program in conjunction and partnership with the Iowa Utilities Board. And it's through this program that the IUB verifies the amount of renewable energy we produce and deliver to our customers on an annual basis. And so as you can see, this year, we delivered renewable energy equal to 61.3% of our customers' usage in 19. And so we expect that percentage to get to 83% in 2021. So simply by being our customer, every person in business and in Des Moines gets to get this 83% of their energy from renewable resources regardless of their situation. So we invest in renewable energy on behalf of our customers so the full benefits can be reaped equitably by all customers while helping them achieve their sustainability goals. So our environmental respect core principle compels us to reduce emissions. So between 2005 and 2019, carbon intensity has decreased by 50.6%. So additionally, within the last 70 months, we've retired four coal units across the state of Iowa, which we've been able to do thanks to our commitment and investments in renewable energy. And we're always exploring opportunities to responsibly progress toward a carbon-free future, such as adding solar to our generation mix, deploying technologies like battery storage, and evaluating emerging solutions like geomechanical pump storage to help bolster the availability of our renewable energy. And we also identify ways to integrate additional carbon-free energy sources such as nuclear. And it's also something that helps us deliver on our sustainability. So we always continue to evaluate and adopt technologies that align with our customers' goals of reliable energy at an affordable price that is delivered in a sustainable way. So let's talk a little bit about affordability, reliability, because at Mid-American, we check ourselves with the term balanced outcomes. And we use it to ensure our decisions do not adversely impact anyone. I mean, anyone. And we are acutely focused on environmental justice, but equally focused on social justice. And our approach is to ensure all customers can afford their electric service. Delivering affordable energy is especially critical for those who are most vulnerable, as lower fixed incomes can be disproportionately affected by rising energy costs and are often less able to take advantage of energy and saving programs. So as we continue to move toward our cleaner, carbon-free energy resources, we must provide the balance with affordability and reliability as well. Another way of thinking about this is the three-legged stool. For the energy of, for the delivery of energy, the legs of the stool are affordability, reliability, and sustainability. And so without any one of these legs, that stool falls down. And because the wind doesn't always blow and the sun doesn't always shine, our renewable assets cannot solely be relied upon to provide the consistent and reliable power our customers need to power their lives. And I think we all can remember the derecho, and it provided this, the great opportunity to appreciate the role of reliable energy sources. And we all know what the impacts were due to this storm and many other weather situations we endure throughout all 12 months of the year. And there is very limited, I would almost say, small tolerance for not being able to have your electricity on when you need it, because we rely, all rely on having our lights on, our computers running, our phones charged, manufacturing equipment humming, and hospitals functioning without interruption. Energy reliability is a must-have for our customers, and rightly so. So today, our fossil generation fills a critical gap that is cost prohibitive to overcome more advances in technology, but we will get there. This is done while maintaining some of the lowest rates in the country. And currently, we're the 13th lowest, and we have the 31% below national average. That's an incredible something that we're proud of, that we share with all of our customers and as your partner with the city of Des Moines. So these shared goals drive sustainable economic development from small businesses to manufacturers, which drive the city's revenue stream and economic prosperity in balance with environmental and social justice. I'm going to turn it over to Mike now, as he's got a couple other options for you to consider as we work together on this path forward.
Thank you. This is Mike Fair. Catherine has set the stage by explaining our shared goals as well as the values that Mid-American adheres to to fairly serve all of our customers. Your resolution, though, is seeking carbon-free energy for Des Moines on a 24/7 basis. So as the person that leads our renewable projects and portfolio, I want to walk through and explain what it would actually take to help achieve that goal as set out in the, in the resolution being discussed today. There've been a lot of studies done on this topic. Several have been conducted looking at these costs to move Iowa to 100% renewable. And some of these studies are summarized.
Mike?
Yeah, sorry.
You're just a little quiet, so just speak up so we can hear you better.
Okay, I apologize. I'll, I'll try to talk a little louder. There've been several studies done looking at these costs, what it would take to move Iowa to 100% renewable through a few different, you know, assumptions, and there's different things in these studies. But I've reviewed the Iowa Environmental Council's report titled Iowa's Road to 100% Renewable. And this slide summarizes the content of the recommendations in that report. And you can see that even in the low case, this, this goes through the renewables that it would take to build the renewable capacity that we need to serve the state of Iowa. And there's two different, there's two different cases. There's a low case and a high case. The renewables for the low case and the high case are shown. We don't know what the amount of batteries would be. That's not something that was included in the report. But even looking at this, you can see, get a feel for the investment amount that would be required to serve Iowa. And again, this is for all of Iowa, not just Des Moines. And it includes the renewable generators, but not the poles and wires or the batteries that would be needed to support this new infrastructure. And it comes to about $54.7 billion in the low case for that amount and $127 billion almost in the high case. We, we tried to look at this during our own little analysis. It's, it's an analysis where we look at the investment amount that would be required, and then we look at what that would take to get there with 100% renewables and energy storage. So 100% renewable and energy storage, I believe that's consistent with what you have in your resolution. And to accomplish that, there's two feasible ways that we think we could, we can show you to get there. The first option only includes renewables for the energy. It doesn't consider other non-carbon emitting generation sources. And the renewables would be built primarily outside of Des Moines just due to siting requirements in wind resources. And it would also take a considerable amount of utility-scale batteries. So the, the size of the battery area required is roughly equivalent to the capital complex as shown, the size of the capital complex as shown on the slide that I'm presenting now. Alternatively, we could use other technologies. There are several promising technologies that are being developed to help decarbonize, including small modular reactors. So we also looked at a case where we would use small modular reactors. The investment for that case is $1 to $2 billion as opposed to the approximately $8 billion for the renewables-only case. In either scenario, because this investment would be made to only serve Des Moines customers with 24/7 emissions-free energy on an hourly basis, and it would not benefit other customers, we would need to collect the cost entirely from Des Moines. So obviously, the, the scale would have to go up considerably if we were going to serve all of Iowa. So that's a big concept. It's a new concept. Let me just quickly walk through some of the billing packs that we would expect based on these two alternative methods of achieving that goal. This is a bill for a real Des Moines residential customer. It has a generic name and address. And this is the bill that is under today's rates. This is what the bill would be for the other customers that we serve outside of Des Moines. Here's the same bill with the case where we serve the Des Moines load 100% renewable on an hourly basis using renewables and batteries. And you can see that the, sorry, you can see that there's a significant carbon-free charge added to this bill that brings it up substantially, comes up to approximately three and a half times what the bill was before. And if we try to do the same thing with the nuclear, small modular nuclear reactors, there's a much smaller carbon-free charge. It would bring the bill up to approximately one and a half times what the bill would be, again, under the current billing status and what the bill would be for other customers in our service territory. So here's a comparison of all three, the status quo, renewables and batteries, and nuclear batteries for the city of Des Moines. This is the same thing but for a small business customer such as a restaurant. So the initial bill amount here currently is about $570 a month. And with the renewable and batteries option, there would be a $2,000 plus adder to that bill to recover the cost of those investments. And with the nuclear case, that amount is approximately $392. So the commercial bill would go up by about four and a half times in the case of renewable plus batteries and about 1.7 times in the case of nuclear plus batteries. The industrial customer, we picked a typical industrial customer here, and we did the same bill comparison for that customer class. The bill, the monthly bill amount shown here under the normal status quo circumstances, about $8,000 a month. When we add the renewable and battery cost recovery, it increases by about $36,000 to $43,000 per month. And under the nuclear case, the amount jumps by about $7,000 to about $16,000 a month. So in this case, the renewable and batteries increases the bill by about, it makes the bill about 5.4 times what it would have been previously. And in the nuclear case, about 1.9 times what it would have been previously. Again, those are, the numbers set out here are really just for the Des Moines customers. It would not be reflective of the rest of our service territory. And the column on the far right is kind of the status quo column. where, again, MidAmerican continues to attempt to decarbonize, but without installing these additional resources to serve the city of Des Moines. With that, I will turn it back to Catherine.
All right, so obviously, we have provided you a lot of information here. What we really wanted to do was give you a concept of opportunities, options, ideas, how we can get you to a space that you maybe or may not want to embrace additionally beyond what we're providing everybody already through Green Advantage. So that was our purpose here today. But we, I think, also wanted to let you know and confirm where we're going together. And then obviously, we're pretty proud of being your energy partner and that we've built a very impressive resume working together, sharing goals and solving problems, supporting initiatives, affecting change, change again by working together. And again, today, we are at this table with you, together as partners, to show you scenarios that allow you to achieve the new goals you are putting forward. And as I wrap up today, I want to summarize for you some of the other areas we, where we have been in the past together and will continue to be so in the future. And especially with economic development. And I, you know, I have a lot of opportunities to work with the city and all of you and all of the business across our, our great region and elected officials that we brought, obviously, great jobs and businesses to the community by providing low-cost, reliable and renewable energy. Because it is the key competitive advantage and you can't have one without the other. And I think that's why the visual of the three-legged stool makes so much sense for us to understand. And also, energy efficiency, we can't go that unsaid. That's a big value proposition as well. And the fact that we are at the table through various programs. And, you know, supporting our customers there have resulted in about 215 million KWH of energy savings during the last five years, which is equivalent to about 152,000 metric tons of CO2 KWH emissions. We've also got a very strong electric vehicle and fleet, fleet electrification program. So working together, we can help build and charge the infrastructure in the city at a very affordable space. Obviously, we're proud of our good corporate citizenship role that we play with this community. From sponsoring DARTs, electric buses, to supporting major community enhancements, we're very proud to call Des Moines home and that it is where we have our headquarters as well. So again, thank you for this great opportunity. Obviously, we'll be available now and in the future to continue to work together, to make good decisions and to continue to bring at least what we can to the table with you. Thank you.
Okay, Carrie and Steve, you are both co-hosts and you can share your screen and presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so first of all, just thank you so much for having us today and allowing us the opportunity to present. I have a prepared presentation here today. But I, I may have to, I'm going to go through my slides. But I also want to make sure that I'm addressing some of what was stated by MidAmerican in the presentation here before. So just to begin, a little about the Iowa Environmental Council. Jeremy mentioned us briefly earlier, but we're a nonprofit, non-governmental organization focused on clean energy and clean water. We work on policy research, advocacy and education and outreach. We have almost 100 member organizations and businesses and 13 professional staff. The folks presenting today, I'm Carrie Johansson. I'm the Energy Program Director at IEC. I have a master's in science, technology and environmental policy from the University of Minnesota and almost 15 years of experience in energy policy. From the US Senate Government, the US Senate Agriculture Committee to working for six years for the Iowa Utilities Board before joining, joining IEC. Steve Geier, who will be available for questions when this is over, has 30 years of experience in energy and utilities, having worked as an attorney for both MidAmerican and Alliant and run his own solar business for the past decade. He is a wealth of knowledge and the chief author on the research. I'm going to talk about some today that we hope will inform this conversation. So why reach for 100% renewable electricity? Scientists tell us we have roughly a decade to make real and substantial progress to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. This will require the largest and fastest transition the energy sector has ever seen. It doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but if we're going to be where we need to be in 10 years, we need to start planning today. Electric sector emissions have fallen a lot in the past decade, and that is a good thing with the addition of wind. And MidAmerican has really been an exceptional leader in this space nationally while keeping rates low. And they referenced that earlier. But you can see that expanding wind clearly doesn't mean necessarily falling emissions. The orange line there on top is emissions from the electric generation sector. Lots of progress there, but you can see that emissions rose in 2017 and 2018 despite more wind coming online. Our research shows that this can be traced to more natural gas generation from the Marshalltown Generating Station, but also that coal generation rose in those years, including the generation sold to serve customers, not just in Iowa, but in other states. This is an important point. Even if the utilities generated enough wind to cover 100% of their Iowa customers' use on paper, but still ran coal plants as backup and sold coal energy into the market, our emissions could actually rise even as we get closer to this 100% renewable vision. That is why it is so important to have a 24/7 renewable energy standard that can be accomplished over the next decade with additions of solar, storage, efficiency and grid management technologies. Not tomorrow, but over time. So let's look at the Iowa generation next and where we've been historically. Just 10 years ago, Iowa was 74% coal and only 8% wind. It was, it was just getting started back then. And here's where we ended up in 2019. 41% wind, 36% coal. For the first time ever, those two generation sources flipped and we had more, more coming from wind than coal. This major shift away from coal is impressive. It also has meant 10,000 wind energy jobs, $61 million in local property tax payments annually, and $69 million in payments to farmers who host turbines on their land. Building out renewables even further, including expanding investments to include solar and storage, would provide even more economic benefit in Iowa. So Mike mentioned the report that we released earlier this year. You may not have seen it at the time. There were a few other news items dominating the headlines in May. But this is important. We looked at a dozen recent studies about Iowa's role in decarbonizing the US electric grid. We found that we would need between 30,000 and 61,000 megawatts of wind and 5,000 and 20,000 megawatts of solar to decarbonize. Right now, we have about 10,000 megawatts of wind and fewer than 200 megawatts of solar. Though there are about 3,100 megawatts of solar in the MISO process in Iowa. So just wanted to note that there, that we have already had investments worth 10,000 megawatts of wind. It was not clear whether the numbers from MidAmerican there included that 10,000 that's already in the ground, that we're already, you know, Iowa customers are already paying for or not. But that 10,000, a third of the way to that 30,000 goal is already in the ground and paid for while MidAmerican has kept rates low. Another point that we really need to think about here is that wind and solar are the cheapest options available. And it's not just about the environment. It's about customer rates and affordability. Cost reductions in renewables have turned the economics of energy, energy generation upside down. And it is now, in many cases, cheaper to build new renewables than to continue to operate existing coal plants. If we do make the switch, then energy is cost. If we do not make the switch over, then energy is costing customers more than it should, period. Our utilities should be doing the math to see what makes the most economic sense. So you can have a pure cost number that you need to look at compared to what? Are we paying more or will we be paying more in the next couple of years to continue to use existing sources of generation versus building new? That's a calculation that we have not seen done. Finally, we just want to emphasize the importance of all levels of government showing leadership. Clean electricity is fundamental to reducing greenhouse gas emissions in other sectors like transportation and buildings, like Jeremy mentioned earlier. Also, he mentioned the stat of one in three Americans already lives in a community that is committed to or achieved 100% renewable electricity. And that's in diverse cities with diverse utilities. We're talking about Xcel Energy, A E, American Electric Power in Arkansas, Rocky Mountain Power in Salt Lake City and others. We're not just talking about municipal utilities. It's utilities across the spectrum. Iowa has an exclusive service territory law, so people do not have a choice in where they get their energy, especially people who are unable to afford their own solar panels, for example. Government-set policy, the federal wind production tax credit and good regulatory policies passed by the state legislature drove MidAmerican investments in wind. Des Moines and its residents are customers of MidAmerican. Policy is the way we let them know what we want. I hope you all received the letter I delivered with over 40 businesses and organizations, as well as 600 Des Moines residents who are asking for MidAmerican to be a leader for the city council to set the policy that's going to get us to 100% renewable. Setting policy and making our voices heard is the only way we can really have a voice in what, what our utility does. We're not demanding that this happens tomorrow, of course. We understand how the, how the energy system works, how the MISO process works, et cetera. But by setting this policy goal, the city is deciding a policy that will drive innovation. MidAmerican has done this before, pushing further than anyone would have thought possible a decade ago. We are confident with the, with the right policy levers in place, they can do it again over the next decade. Thank you.
Mary, Mary, real quick, and I know we're not supposed to ask, answer, ask questions, but I think before Carrie leaves, was her presentation directed at all Des Moines with, with her? Go back a few slides, or is this the entire state of Iowa?
This is, this is the whole state of Iowa.
Okay, so we're, we're focusing on Des Moines, not, not the state. So do you have specific information for Des Moines, like MidAmerica had laid out?
So Des Moines is about 10% of MidAmerican's total load. I think one thing that's, that's a great question. I think one thing, okay.
Yeah, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wondered what your explanation was.
Okay, no, um, so, so the, so, yeah, sorry. So Des Moines is about 10% of MidAmerican's load. You know, our study focused on the entire state of Iowa. When the utility builds any kind of generation, it goes to the Utilities Board for decisions about how the costs of that are allocated among customers. And so, yes, Des Moines would be setting the policy, but MidAmerican would have to go to the Utilities Board for approval of any rate increases or, or how that gets allocated to customers.
Okay, but your information is all based on the state. You have no information directly based for the city of Des Moines, which you just presented us. And that's what we're voting on, a resolution for the city of Des Moines residents, for our 210,000 residents, correct?
Yeah, I don't have that breakdown.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, next is Jason. And Jason, you're a co-host and can share your screen.
Okay, very good. All right, hopefully, everybody can see my screen at this point.
Yes, we can.
All right, very good. Good morning, everybody. I am Jason Steinbach with WellDan, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you on this topic this morning as well. First, I want to just give a little bit of background about WellDan, in case you're not familiar with us. WellDan was a company, was founded in 1964. Some of you may know the White Group. We merged and became part of WellDan last year and have run the Commercial New Construction Program in Iowa, supported by MidAmerican Energy since 1999. WellDan as a whole has delivered over 260,000 projects and helped at the bottom there save customers and clients over 6,400 gigawatt hours in 92 million terms, which translates to over 5 million metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions avoided. WellDan's primary focuses are shown on the right. Energy efficiency and electrification, working with clients and customers on solar plus storage opportunities, carbon emissions reductions, electric vehicles, microgrids and smart cities, and power resiliency. All of these things, I think, are tied together as we talk about the resolution's goals. I, I wanted to give a little bit of context. I'm going to mostly talk about buildings and really commercial buildings. That's where my expertise lies and experience here in Des Moines and Iowa has been. AA 2030 is an organization for architects, and they have a mission also to rapidly transform the built environment and achieve a carbon-positive built environment. They do this in a two-step process. The first step being energy reductions during planning, design and construction. A goal of getting buildings to use 70 to 80% less energy than they were in 2003. And the second step is getting to renewables. So how are we doing? As we look at this here, you will see two states in blue, Iowa and California, as the only two states that are achieving greater than a 50% energy use intensity reduction today towards that 2030 commitment. If we take it a step farther here, you can see Iowa is the bottom bar there, and you can see Minnesota and Wisconsin. And then nationally, the two right-hand colors there, the 12% and the 26%, are buildings that are achieving between 60 and 70% energy savings and over 70% energy savings. Iowa is doing more of that than our neighboring states and then nationally. And that translates to the city of Des Moines as well. And this is important because the architects, the engineers, the building owners, the developers, they are already focused in achieving sustainability, emissions reductions and energy efficiency. And they are on the path to do that at a greater rate than our surrounding states and certainly than nationally. And so as we think about going even farther to achieve the resolution's goals, I think we need to think about this in steps. And the first thing is to think about reducing energy, energy conservation. That energy that you don't use, you don't have to meet that with any sort of generation. So for new buildings, you have the opportunity to really think about shape and volume and thermal mass and even mechanical concepts. From there, then you can apply different scenarios to help meet that load efficiently. And this can be done with existing buildings as well. Because again, if we're going to get to 100% renewable, we can't just focus on new buildings. We have to focus on existing as well. As you start to do that and efficient buildings meet the system, the HVAC, the mechanical systems, how you heat and cool it becomes critical, as well as that domestic hot water. Those are key areas where we can move potentially from other systems to carbon-free generation in order to do that, electrification, if you will. Once you've done those things and reduced that load as much as possible, then you can apply those renewable sources. Now, MidAmerican is already generating a lot of electricity through renewable sources, as you've seen. From there, within the building system, there may be opportunities to do, you know, PV at the building, continue to work with MidAmerican Energy on that wind generation, maybe microturbines, fuel cells, and then storage batteries. But again, you want to apply those renewable sources after you've done everything you can to bring the loads down. Lastly, though, as we think about 100% renewable, we have to remember that people run these buildings. And so things like schedules, controls, maintenance become really, really important. But even more so, as we think about when the wind may be blowing or when the sun may be shining, you have to think about the demand response of that building and the grid interactions of that building. It really changes the way buildings will have to be run in order to meet these resolutions. And then benchmarks as well, continue to track that going forward. So the first step may be efficient electrification. And there is already a lot of this going on in Des Moines and in Iowa. Heat pumps, variable refrigerant flow systems, heat pump water heaters, and even Heat pumps, variable refrigerant flow systems, heat pump water heaters, and even electrifying kitchen equipment and things like that. We'll have to go all the way there in order to achieve this a hundred percent renewable. Efficient electrification aligns with renewables to achieve that carbon reduction. And in fact, twenty-five percent of the commercial new construction projects today that Mid-American Energy helps sponsor are all electric. But targeting a hundred percent renewable, not all energy consumption is the same anymore. We have to think about shaping our energy use. Again, capturing demand response that reshapes load profiles, maybe through price response or other campaigns. Um, sometimes with advanced notice of months or days, but even potentially just on an hourly basis to align with when that wind is blowing, when that sun is shining. We then also have to shift that demand response to move energy consumption from times of high demand. Or low wind production to times when there is additional renewable generation. This can now shift and smooth out load ramps and things of that nature. And then lastly, we have to be prepared to shed energy and curtail energy at times when. We need additional peak capacity and it may not be available from wind. So those graphs on the bottom really show what I'm talking about. Efficiency is key because it lowers it at all hours of the day. That middle one there is shedding that load, so turning off things like lights or changing heating and cooling set points at times of peak demand, when maybe there is not a lot of renewable generation available. And then that far right-hand one there of shifting that load and moving it from times maybe when the wind or the sun isn't shining to times when it was available. Again, reducing the need and things of that nature for batteries. We did a study for another utility, not Mid-American Energy, but a Midwest utility, where we looked at what we called the time value of energy efficiency. And really, what is that economic value of energy efficiency in changing due to the decarbonization of systems? Can energy efficiency be used to shape the load to achieve carbon reduction and renewable energy goals? In short, can it become a grid resource? So the study conclusions you see on the right-hand side there, efficient heating systems such as heat pumps and variable refrigerant flow systems have the greatest impacts. Electric resistance heat, so not all electrification, just moving to straight up electricity resistance heat, for example, is not the answer. LED lighting, lighting controls, they continue to play a role, just as they have today. And lastly, things like ice storage and dynamic glazing, which allow for some of that shifting of load that I was talking about on the previous slide, have increased value. As we move towards electrification, this also means electric vehicles. Um, and their EV roadmaps and business plans need to be developed, fleet conversion feasibility needs to be studied. It needs to integrate with electrification and smart city strategies. If you look at the graphs on the top right-hand side there, you see one where it's just electrifying uh, vehicles. With non-managed charging and things of this nature. So if you just electrify the fleet and don't manage it. It will cause problems with hundred percent renewable goals, as oftentimes you may be charging when that renewable energy is not available. Or when that renewable energy needs to be used by buildings and other needs. So it has to have smart charging capabilities. And again, it needs to integrate with that grid. Mid-American Energy's uh, wind and renewable grid to make sure you're taking advantage of that wind to charge those electric vehicles. As we think about buildings of the future and moving towards the goals of this resolution, they become very interconnected. So you have the utility generating renewable energy, feeding it to the building. That building very likely will have some level of rooftop solar to supplement. And then all of the systems in the building, that HVAC system, the lighting system, the plug loads. Occupants, even the windows, will all have to talk back to smart meters in the grid. To understand how to shape and shift those loads in response to the renewable generation. And that includes the EV charging. So we're moving to a much more complex, interactive buildings. That are very dynamic and changing with the grid as the grid changes to reflect the availability of wind and solar at that grid level. And it's not an easy thing to do. So this is a pilot project. Uh, where there was solar, there were batteries, there was conservation. And the building operator had to decide how they were going to use these things. So you can see here in a summer day, they're charging the batteries uh, in the evenings. Um, or actually with the solar, sorry, and then they're discharging those batteries in the evening when that solar is not available. This particular grid did not have uh, access to the grid scale renewables of wind that Mid-American produces. So with Mid-Americans, these graphs would change slightly. But you still have the challenges of deciding, when are you going to charge those batteries? When are you going to discharge those batteries? And how does that fit with the sun? And same things on the winter day, it changes daily. In fact, it may change even hourly. So again, as we think about it, we will have to have very connected buildings. So going forward for the future, we need to continue to benchmark buildings. The city of Des Moines is already doing that today. Target buildings with those high usages and meet teams and buildings where they are. And provide them targets to carbon reduction and a hundred percent renewable energy, starting with energy efficiency. Potentially electrification. And then maybe building renewable generation to supplement Mid-American Energy's renewable generation. Until they reach the hundred percent generation mark. And that may require some storage. It really becomes the interact, the intersection of reliability, which Mid-American was talking about and is critical. Resiliency, uh, economics, and then the environment, reaching those greenhouse gas emission reductions goals. We have been doing a study in New York where we've been benchmarking buildings and then doing an energy, energy analysis to show paths for these existing buildings to a hundred percent renewable energy use. So it is possible, particularly with the renewable generation that Mid-American is already putting out. Thank you.
All right, who's up next?
Heather, you're a co-host and you can share your screen.
Great. Um, hi, everyone. Let me know if my slides aren't visible.
You're all set.
Great. Okay, I'll give you a quick introduction of myself. Uh, good morning, everyone. My name is Heather Christensen. I am Senior Market Research Analyst, but also known as the Sustainability Coordinator for Kemen Industries. Uh, I am also a board member for Urban Ambassadors. It's a nonprofit. Here in the Des Moines area that helps individuals be more sustainable. And I've been active with the Des Moines Mayor's Sustainability Task Force for nearly two years. I wanted to share some of the uh, views from the task force. Um, we've tried to, as a task force, we've tried to engage diverse perspectives. Uh, one of those that I'm going to share with you today is my perspective. From an industry within Des Moines, um, my point of view with clean energy from there. And uh, there's, so clean, so a hundred percent clean energy resolution provides a, a vision really for Des Moines, where we can be a leader in Iowa. And I think it's been mentioned that there's a scientific consensus. Uh, that we need to cut our emissions in half by twenty thirty and then to zero by twenty fifty. And this is something that business is very much in line with and very, and understanding that this is a need. Um, that we have to transition to this carbon-free energy sources to lower our emissions. Uh, we've had a climate action plan that's looked at the local impacts of climate change. Where fifty-one percent of our emissions come from electricity for Des Moines. And so this is a great place to start because there are cleaner technologies available. There's different scenarios available to. Incorporate that clean energy. Um, and with that, there also comes opportunities for local jobs and to attract businesses and support businesses that are here. So for Kemen's vision that guides us. It's that we strive to sustainably transform the quality of life every day for eighty percent of the world with our products and services. So Kemen is truly a, a local business based in Des Moines, Iowa with a global reach. There's twice as many people on the earth now as there was when Kemen was founded in nineteen sixty-one. Populations continue to grow and we realize that we're on a planet with limited resources. Um, so for Kemen to impact the quality of life for eighty percent of the world. And, and to have this as a vision, vision, it's imperative that we do this sustainably. So a little about Kemen, we have more than fifteen manufacturing locations worldwide. Uh. With our headquarters being in the heart of Des Moines. We operate in more than ninety countries and have customers in more than a hundred and twenty countries. And we are manufacturers of over five hundred specialty ingredients. So we were founded in nineteen sixty-one, like I said, by RW and Mary Nelson. We remain family-owned and operated. And actually, the, the parking lot of our Des Moines. Uh, on our Des Moines campus is where RW's father used to house sheep before the business came to be. So, so those five hundred ingredients um, span some different industries through animal health and nutrition. Aquaculture, pet food, human nutrition and health, food technologies and crop technologies, and even sustainable ingredients for textiles. So we really are um, touching a lot of the things. We make the ingredients for the things that you guys are familiar with. So part of our sustainability vision, we've developed a sustainability scorecard. Uh, the biggest component of this scorecard is our carbon footprint. So this is where, as a business, we're beginning to measure what our global emissions are. Our next step in this arena is to set some ambitious targets. So this is really an expectation within all those industries that I mentioned that we operate in. It's the expectation to align to clean, this clean energy transition, to reduce our emissions, to be able to produce our products with clean energy. So Kemen has taken it upon ourselves to get a head start on this. And um, here we're looking at the global headquarters of our uh, Des Moines campus. So we sit on Martin Luther King and Southeast Eighteenth Street here. This is the main headquarters office building, which uh, is, is the gateway to the rest of our campus. Um, we are in the process of putting an onsite solar installation to power entirely this headquarters building. So it will pu, will be powering nine thousand square feet of our office area. Um, with, completely with solar power. And when the system is complete, it'll be just over seven hundred and twenty KW. So it represents one of the biggest, if not the biggest, or one of the bigger, if not the biggest corporate installations in the Des Moines area. So right now it's being constructed in two phases. The first phase is a roof array that um, was installed this summer. So there are solar panels that. Um, completely fill the roof of our office building. And then phase two is just beginning now. Uh, they're starting to do some site work and some landscaping. And it will sit on this green space that's at the corner of our employee parking lot that prominently faces Martin Luther King. So it's in a highly, obviously a highly visible spot. Um, and, oh, I'm so sorry. There we go. So the, the system that's going to go on that spot is a bifacial tracking system. So when people are coming into the Des Moines downtown area on their way to work in the morning, the panels will be facing east toward, and then they'll follow the path across the sky of the sun. And then when people are returning home, uh, heading from downtown, they'll be able to see the. Panels facing that direction. So we're really excited for this technology here. We've also been working with a local Iowa business to be able to do this. The owner's a veteran and also a city council member in Fairfield, Iowa. They've been great to work with. We were able to consider different designs and technologies. And tour other installations that have been done around Iowa and see different storage, uh, battery storage and, and. Uh, other types of infrastructure that, that help bring solar to businesses. So there are some immediate project benefits that we're going to see from this. Uh, obviously a reduction in our CO2 emissions. And over twenty-five years' time, it'll be eighteen thousand metric tons that will reduce by using this system. And really, this prominent display of our solar demonstrates Kemen's commitment to this clean energy transition. So for us, it represents around eighty thousand dollars a year in utility savings. That can be reinvested, reinvested in, in local, in local opportunities in. Other technology strategies toward our goals. There's also future opportunity here. So as we develop out our strategies for that, that low-carbon um, business model. There's the a hundred percent clean energy resolution in Des Moines is an obvious advantage for us. So this is where the city and our local energy provider become our partner in providing strategies to meet our emission goals. So personally, and as a task force member, and as a business member in Des Moines, in the sustainability field. I absolutely want to see Des Moines be Iowa's most sustainable place to do business. If we commit to one hundred percent clean ener, energy. We're signaling to all of our industries and other industries that we're a community that welcomes new business to this area. And one thing that's important for us at Kemen is that it continues to attract top talent and young professionals that wanted to make Des Moines their home. There's also local clean energy jobs, so good-paying jobs. A lot of the investment that, that we're putting into our strategy goes right back into the community. Goes back into Iowa, goes into Des Moines. And some of the biggest names that have been mentioned already in tech and finance and retail, they all have clean energy goals. And this isn't something that is going to go away. This is something that, those people are our customers. Those. You know, some of these big names, those are our big customers. They have these clean energy goals. And the expectation is that eventually other businesses that do business with these big, big companies. Also need to have these goals. So that's what Kemen is working toward right now. Um, investing in clean energy puts Des Moines ahead of the competition, recording these new businesses and businesses that are starting to realize the importance of clean energy. And I think it's already been mentioned that uh, we can join the ranks of other Midwestern cities that are, already have clean energy goals. So um, that's all I have for my presentation today. I wanted to thank everyone for listening and hopefully you were able to learn something.
Mayor, real quick, I'd love to ask Heather a question before she popped off.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Heather, first of all, I appreciate the commitment from Kemen Industries and, and our city and the, and the development that you've done uh, off of MLK. Uh, during the deratio, did you have any damage to your sto, solar panels?
Yes, we did. So that um, installation on the rooftop was complete during the summer. And then we had the deratio. So the installation hasn't been hooked up yet. It won't be hooked up until we have the entire system going. But we did sustain twenty-five percent of the panels on the roof, which were rated for a hundred mile per hour winds. Were damaged in the deratio. So um, that, there's still some repair going on up there. And talking about how we're going to um, prevent this from happening again, because we do expect. You know, an increase in some of these frequent storms and, and how do we build resilience into our system to um, account for that?
So, so how are you able to, I mean, so you're traditionally using energy through Mid-America right now. Um, that, that's, that's what you do right now, correct?
Yes, that's what we do right now.
Okay.
Um, and, and one thing I did want to point out too, is that. You know, as, as we continue to have these clean energy goals, for Kemen. What, one thing that's important to note, some of the strategies that Jason uh, shared with us are strategies that we're going to have to consider. Because even if we put uh, solar panels on every available square foot of our campus. We wouldn't be able to meet our energy needs with clean energy. So there's. So there's going to have to be a lot of different strategies that we're gonna have to incorporate and partner on to make that possible.
Yeah, it's good to hear you say that. So how do you, so if the sun's not shining, do you have an alternative method? Are you doing lithium batteries? Or what exactly are you going to do? Or are you just gonna do traditionally the the wind energy that were provided through through Mid-Am?
So we haven't got that far yet into planning what that strategy in that scenario is going to be. But these are, all those things that you mentioned are gonna be considered. And some of the things that Jason shared, too, are things that I've been familiar with and that we're familiarizing ourselves with. There's a lot of different strategies to get to that hundred percent clean energy.
Right. But for you to operate your business, Kemen, what a great company is, that, you know, global, you need all assets of energy, not just solar, not just nuclear, but we need all forms of energy. I mean, you you kind of said it yourself, to to make your company run.
Well, I don't know. Energy's energy, depending on where it comes from. That's the choice. So I think there are strategies that you can make to choose, because it's very important for business to be able to say, this was one hundred percent clean energy. This is from one hundred percent clean energy. And the technologies are starting to be there. Businesses are doing it. Businesses, businesses all over the globe are doing it.
Sure, sure. So what would you estimate right now that you get energy from Mid-America Energy, the way that they, the way that they provide it to to our city? Wha- what percentage do you think you get? Do you get ninety percent? Do you get fifty percent?
So we, we, I utilize the information that's from the Iowa Utility Board, and that's what was shared. And that's just Iowa's portion. So there's still the question of we are still emitting a lot as a state and as a city when we produce our energy. So those are things that are issues of transparency and how we talk about how our energy that is produced that we need to think about on a business level, too, is is how do we, how do we ethically talk about that? That that maybe our portion of the energy is a certain percentage of renewables or clean energy, but yet there's still coal plants producing emissions. So these are considerations that we have to think about and how we talk about those as we go forward.
Sure. Thanks for all you do, Heather. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
So we're finished with our presenters for today, so I'll turn it over to Mayor and Council for continued discussion and and questions. Mayor, are you still on? I know you said you had to pop off at eight forty-five.
I think he took off, so if if you could take over.
Yeah, that would be fine. I'll open it up for our council members and any questions. Looks like Josh has his hand up. Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you, Joe. And I wanted to to first off, start by thanking all of our presenters today. I think this has been a really helpful conversation to better understand some of the context and and the pathways forward. You know, one thing I I wanna, at at the front end of this, acknowledge that the reason that we can have a conversation today about what are about aggressive emission reduction goals and about a twenty-four-seven, one hundred percent clean energy vision is because of what Mid-American has already achieved. You know, ten or fifteen years ago, if you would have asked a utility company to produce the equivalent of ninety or a hundred percent of their customer load with renewable energy and do so while keeping rates stable, they would have told you that that it was impossible. In fact, more likely than not, you would have heard some combination of concerns about affordability and reliability like we heard in Mid-American's presentation this morning. But we have the benefit of of history here in in Iowa, and Mid-American did it. You know, they added thousands of megawatts of new wind generation without significant rate increases. As they pointed out, you know, I don't think there's another utility that generates as much energy in the country from wind resources. And Mid-American specifically pointed out during their presentation that they've got the thirteenth lowest rates in the country, and they're thirty-one percent below the national average, while adding more renewable energy than any other utility. So we know that it's possible to to do this and to do more. You know, part of this, it's a testament to the fact that Mid-American's a well-run utility, that they're very capable of innovation and doing things that others don't think are possible. And that's why we're in this position to talk about a strong clean, clean electricity standard for the community of Des Moines. And it's, I think, particularly important that we be having this conversation at this moment in time. I think Jeremy did a really good job of laying out the stakes and why action now to address climate change is particularly important. But there's another piece that that I think it's particularly important for for us to act and and to think about. You know, we're we're on the verge of a transition in administrations at the federal level. And we're gonna have an active partner in addressing climate change. But that administration is gonna need partners at the local level. You know, the the Biden Climate Plan is ambitious in scope. And importantly, it includes a nationwide one hundred percent clean electricity goal by twenty thirty-five. And that's really the crux of our clean, clean electricity standard. I wanted to get into to some some questions. And I think one of the things that I I'm hoping would be useful is to just level set, not just among the panelists, but but also the council on just some basic things that I think we all agree on. And I take that sort of reading between the lines in the presentations and also from comments my colleagues have sent. So I don't want to spend a ton of time, but if anyone disagrees with these things, I I'd hope they'll they'll speak up. But I think everyone, panelists and and council members, agree that climate change is real, that human activity is a major cause of climate change, and that we have an urgent need to act to address climate change. I'll I'll pause for a second if anyone disagrees with any of those things. You know, I'd like you to speak up, because I think we need to know that to continue the conversation forward, but I think everyone agrees. I'll assume that 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 silence is is agreement. The the next piece, and and I think this piece is important from from an agreement perspective in terms of where we go from policy. I think everyone on on this call is likely to agree that we want to support the Biden administration in achieving its goal to have a hundred percent clean electricity nationwide by twenty thirty-five. And if anyone disagrees, particularly, I I wanna call out the panelists, Mid-American, you know, Kemen, if anyone disagrees with that, please speak up now.
Josh, first and foremost, I appreciate, I appreciate you putting everybody on the line and and asking for their input. And I think clearly, we know where you stand in this, being this is your day job, you're you're lobbyist that for environmental reasons. And for for that reason, Josh, I mean, for only an appearance of a conflict, you writing a resolution like Scott had talked about for us as a council to even look at it, we can look at it, but first of all, you you won't be writing any resolution that I'll be agreeing to just because of the appearance of any conflict. Not to say that I disagree with you in any way, but you've got to be very careful. You're walking a very thin line. And you're taking us all as council members and your colleagues down a path where there's an appearance of a conflict. And I think that you you need to take a step back and look at that. This is what you do for a daytime job. This is your job.
Joe, I I've also litigated cases on conflict of interest. And this is a policy of general applicability. And right now, it, we we can talk about that. You can request an opinion. We can address that later. But right now, we have panelists here, and I'd like to have the time to have discussion and ask panelist questions. So if I could.
I under- I understand that, but and I'm not saying it's a conflict. I'm saying there's an appearance of a conflict, similar when you don't vote on the fifth project that your cousins, and you don't have any, you don't have any money put into it, but you do not do, you do not vote on that because of an appearance of a conflict. You have that, you have that issue right now. Right now, as we speak and as you're asking panelist questions, you have that conflict. So you can, you can continue. You could continue.
I disagree with your assessment.
I understand.
So I I I want to go back and and that that area where I think there's agreement. Does everyone agree, particularly, you know, the panelists, that we all want to support the Biden administration in achieving its goal to have a hundred percent clean electricity nationwide by twenty thirty-five?
I see a few council members up. I would like to see the Biden plan. I can't say whether I'm going to agree with it or whether I don't, because I've never read it. So Carl, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
I, well, I wasn't done, so I I still have a few other questions.
I know that you asked them if they agreed, or your colleagues, so I didn't know if they had their hand up for that reason.
Okay, sure. Let's check with i- if if that's what folks are wanting to talk about.
You wanted to talk about, I just seen your hand up.
Well, we're not voting on a resolution right now, right?
No.
Okay, well, my question was gonna be about coal-fired plants, and so.
Okay, then we'll just wait.
Yeah, I still have some additional questions.
Lynda, did you want to comment on Josh's? I know your hand's up, and so is Connie. So if you guys want to comment, jump on in.
Yeah, I I just, you know, I I appreciate you us asking us questions, Josh, but I I don't want to be put, I don't think it's appropriate to ask us questions right now. This is a workshop. We've heard from the presenters. I can tell you, you know, it looks like you've done a great job getting the sustainability people to send us lots of emails to support a hundred percent. I can tell you right now, I am not going to support the resolution that you brought through. And I want to continue to work with Mid-American and as our partner and working together to to make our city more energy-wise. But I'm not going to vote on a, on on the resolution as it's written. It needs to be something that is written with Mid-American energy, with all of the partners, and then we'll look at a resolution. But I'm not gonna answer, you know, your questions that you're asking council to agree or disagree. I'm not gonna take part in that conversation.
Thanks, Lynda. Go ahead, Connie.
Uh, no, mine really was more of a question afterwards, so, or just comments, so I can wait and tell if Josh wants to finish his story.
Go ahead, Josh.
I'll I'll withdraw those. I'll I'll focus. I I wanted to to talk with Mid-American. They they presented their one hundred percent renewable vision, and I I had some questions about that. One, you know, Mid-American currently is the owner, owner-operator of five coal units and the majority owner and not operator of a six. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
And Mid-American, you know, the one hundred percent renewable vision, I think, is an important step forward. But I I want to understand, Mid-American is on track and could achieve that vision without retiring a single one of those coal units. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilman, a hundred percent renewable vision is a rec-based approach, which is, I think, wrecks have done a great deal to advance the deployment of renewables. But you're correct, it's a rec-based approach. And that one hundred percent would be Mid-American generating as much renewable energy each year as our customers use.
Yeah, and and we're on track to meet that in the next few years, right? It looked like twenty twenty-one, we're gonna be ninety percent of the way there from this rec-based approach. And you've had other customers, notably Google, who set a one hundred percent renewable vision. And then when they achieve that quicker and for less, I think, money than they anticipated, they recently took the next step and and set a twenty-four-seven one hundred percent clean energy approach. And so they're in your broader customer base, right? So we wouldn't be the first, first entity in your customer base to set this type of goal. Is that correct?
So, so Josh, I'm gonna, this is Catherine. I'm I'm gonna step in here and partner with Mike on this response. So Google has their own formulas and their own way to get to where they're going. So for us to dissect and go into how they are going to accomplish it and the methodologies and formulas that they use, you'd have to have that conversation with them.
Okay, but but they, I mean, you're aware broadly of their announcement for a twenty-four-seven clean energy.
What I will tell you, Josh, is that they are incredibly focused as well on affordability and reliability. And there is no industry that is more impacted by all three legs of the stool. So I think for the conversation that you're trying to drive to right now, you best contact Google on their environmental piece, but they're, the three-legged stool fits them. They're a perfect example of that.
Josh, Josh, just let me ju- let me just jump in. So, I mean, obviously, you want, you want panelists' input and things like that. But this isn't, this isn't a call or or something to call out Mid-American Energy about their coal-fired plants that aren't even in the city of Des Moines, that, you know, we we have no control over whatsoever. And so, I mean, go ahead and continue your conversation, but we're we're not gonna discuss coal-fired plants. That's not, that shouldn't be part of our resolution or anything about what we want to do in the city of Des Moines. We don't have one in the city of Des Moines.
We we are served by coal generation, and and that's part of this broader discussion. But I've got a couple, just a couple more questions that that I'll, I'll get to. And, you know, I I hope that, you know, Mid-American was the only one of the panelists that didn't provide their presentation in advance. So I can't dig in on questions in terms of the way they presented the the cost exactly. But what it looked to me like was that's sort of a go-it-alone model for Des Moines, essentially the municipalization model of achieving this clean energy goal. And it it provides sort of a ceiling level of cost there. But I think there are other ways to to get there. And one of the things, I've got a question about, does Mid-American have its own climate action plan with reduction goals and timelines for when they plan on meeting them?
Like, if I could, let me first start with the municipalization.
Well, I wasn't really asking about the municipalization. I was asking about the climate piece.
Mid-American, again, continues to advance on all three legs of that stool, including the sustainability.
Mike, could you speak up a little again?
Sorry, yeah, we we, we we can, we are committed to continually advancing all three legs of that stool, including the sustainability piece. We've come a long way, but we're, we're not stopping where we're at. We do plan to continue to advance our sustainability measurements.
And so would you commit to developing public emission reduction goals and a timeline for for how to meet them?
We Can you repeat that, Josh? I missed about half of that.
Sure. I I I was asking if you would, if Mid-American as a company would be Sure. I, I, I was asking if you would, if Mid-American as a company would be willing, working with us as we're trying to, to meet, develop a climate action plan, if Mid-American as a company would be willing, uh, to, to set emission reduction goals and a specific timeline to meet them.
So Josh, what we're committed to, and I think we've made it very clear, is that, um, you know, other utilities have made some really unrealistic and unenforceable public statements, and we're already ahead of them without mandates, and we intend, uh, to get to carbon-free before they do. And I think our statement stands. We are ready and willing to sit at the table with you to continue to work together. Uh, we have our track record. We know we are doing a lot of looks into various technologies and opportunities, and we're building on that every single day. So our commitment stands to continuing to work with all of our partners to achieve, uh, sustainability goals.
So I, I just wanted to pull out what you said, because I think you said that Mid-American's committed to getting to carbon-free before other utilities. Um, so, so that, that's, that's at least a, a goal, um, which I'm appreciative of. Uh, in terms of the process of, of getting to the table, you know, one of the things that the Task Force on Sustainability, they had a, a panel last week, uh, and they, they had someone from Salt Lake City, uh, which I think has a sister utility of Mid-American, Rocky Mountain Power. Uh, and that person was talking about, uh, the importance of the resource planning process in getting low-cost estimates in, in, in all of this. Um, they, they particularly pointed out that when there was that, that resource planning process that really dug in on costs of resources, costs of renewables, it actually led to more retirements of fossil generation and, uh, more renewable generation being built. And I was wondering if Mid-American, since you're willing to commit, um, you know, the other thing is IPL, uh, Alliance Energy on the other side of the state re- recently did a uh, voluntary resource planning process to engage stakeholders and, uh, allow for exchange of information. And that led to an announcement of a retirement of a coal plant and the addition of solar. And I was wondering if Mid-American would commit to a, uh, similar voluntary resource planning process with stakeholders like the Office of Consumer Advocate and others having, uh, the ability to, because the Consumer Advocate is laser-focused on the affordability piece, have the ability to access modeling data and provide feedback and work towards a common goal. Uh, is that something that Mid-American would be willing to do?
Um, Councilman.
Excuse me. Jo- Josh, for the, for the sake of time, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move on.
Well, that's my last question, Joe. That's my last question, so I'd like to get an answer to it.
For, for the last nine years, what they've done without any mandates, I mean, their track record is proven. I'm not sure what, what you're asking them. They're, you want them to do more? They are doing more. They did it without mandates. So, I mean.
Yeah, I want a process so that we can get good assumptions, the, the latest data, and have it be data-driven and, and transparent, uh, with their partners. And, and I'm asking if they're willing to, to do that voluntary process.
Councilman, I, I, I think the process that the state of Iowa uses, and, and I appreciate you acknowledging this earlier, has resulted in some pretty incredible transformation of uh, the way energy is generated in Iowa. I don't think there are very many jurisdictions that have a better approach, uh, more effective approach anyway today, uh, than what we have here in Iowa right now.
Thank you. Carl, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. I, I had a question. This is for, for Mid-American again. I'm trying to understand the, uh, MISO. Am, am I pronouncing that correctly? The MISO, um, agreement, and, um, is there any, could you take a swag at like, how many, days of the year that, that, uh, either of the two Iowa coal-fired plants are actually online?
I don't. Um, I, I, I don't have that information in front of me. I'm sorry. That's, uh.
Are they, are they playing sort of a, a backup role? I might not have used the correct term, but, um.
Correct. They.
Yeah, days of the year that they're not actu- actually operating, right?
Typically, yes. Typically, um, they are there to provide that reliability leg of the stool. And so when they're not needed, we do not operate them. Just for the sake of operating them, they're there for reliability.
For the, um, regional agreements, as a federal plan, you actually have to have those, right? As part of your, um, as, as part of, uh, being a, uh, regional player.
Yes, correct. I, so we, we are obligated to have, um, enough what's called accredited capacity to serve our load, to avoid things like rolling blackouts. And, um, for that reason, uh, we do have to maintain some of those assets that we can dispatch, uh, whether the wind's blowing or the sun's shining.
Okay, I think that helps, um, uh, clarify for me. Thank you.
Connie, I think you had your hand up next.
Yes, I just wanted to bring up about, you know, we talked about, it was about the Joe Biden's plan, the president-elect. If there truly does get something passed and the money starts coming, I guess that's kind of a question for everybody would, would that infrastructure incentive help move to get the coal plant shut down faster and get into other technology faster if there truly are dollars to reinvest in infrastructure? Guess it's kind of open to anybody that deals in this arena.
I, I think there are some technologies that, depending on, on how they're incented, um, there are a lot of promising technologies out there. Obviously, a lot of research and development going into ways to provide that reliability, uh, that, that result in no emissions. Um, and I think, you know, depending on how those incentives are laid out, it could stimulate, uh, the maturity of some of those different technologies.
And I would assume everybody would be interested in taking part in all those kind of incentives if they're available.
If, if the, if the incentives are available, I believe it will effectively stimulate the industry, and of course, we're always looking for, again, those, those assets that can help us achieve affordability, reliability, and sustainability.
Yeah, and this is Jeremy, uh, as well. So certainly, any incentives coming from the federal level or any grant dollars funneled through, uh, for instance, Iowa Economic Development Authority and their Energy Office would certainly help, uh, provide a potential funding mechanism for implementing a number of these solutions. Uh, I think Will Dan, uh, brought up the good point that this is an effort that's going to require us to look at things everywhere from energy efficiency to building electrification, uh, into grid-type buildings, both for new buildings and existing in- infrastructure. And so, um, once you are able to drive down that demand for energy with those efforts, uh, you, you have less energy that you need to produce out of renewables. So there's a balance to it, and any potential infrastructure investment from the federal level would certainly help to offset the cost of those improvements and, uh, make them more affordable.
So I guess it goes back to if, if Des Moines does do a resolution, uh, of some sort, then we should probably look at what the, uh, national one is too, whether, so it's, I think we said 2030 or 2035. So to mirror some of that, because it would be, you know, with going forward, we have four years of an administration that's very supportive. So that would be a big boost, I think, for what everybody's trying to accomplish.
Yeah, and this is Jeremy again. I'd also point you back to the presentation I made a few weeks ago on the climate action and adaptation planning process. I mentioned in there that the credit rating agencies, the bond rating agencies are also increasing their focus on sustainability planning, resilience planning, uh, and renewable energy. And so you're going to see, uh, downward pressure from that side, from the market itself, driving cities towards adopting, uh, more sustainability and, and climate, uh, more aggressive climate goals as they move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Bill, go ahead.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, as we've got quite a bit of information given to us this morning, uh, it's quite a mouthful to, to take in one sitting. Uh, I'm anxious to, to see us move forward on this, but, uh, I'm especially glad to have a partner in Mid-American Energy. They have taken so much, uh, leadership on this before we even ta- started talking about it. I, I share the, uh, uh, great rapport with, uh, Mid-American. They've done wonders, uh, throughout, uh, the Des Moines area, and, uh, I really sense a great partnership in the making here. And I'm just, uh, anxious to start working to go forward, meet our mutual goals, and get it done in a manner that's going to be beneficial for all the citizens in the city of Des Moines. So, uh, I want to thank everybody in here. I, I have learned a lot, uh, and I want to continue to learn. So it's been a great session for me. Thank you, thanks to everybody.
Bill, thank you. Uh, real quick, I got a couple of questions that I had jotted down. Uh, Jeremy, right at the beginning, your first slide, you talked about, uh, the resident, resident survey. Could, can you give me some comparison, or can you go, go to the slides that, that kind of show the survey of where, um, you know, the, the progress in clean energy compares to neighborhood improvements and, and things like that that, uh, that, that we're focused on, and where we compare to other similar cities that I know that that survey that we looked at last, uh, last, uh, work session was on?
Yeah, um, you'll have to give me a second to pull up the city website so I can show it to you. And you're correct, that is the, uh, resident survey that we had a workshop on last week. And, um, so those numbers come directly out of that presentation, so.
And that's listed on, on the city website, correct?
Yeah. So if you give me a second to pull that up, we can maybe take another question in between.
Yeah, uh, so I, I guess maybe, maybe Catherine or somebody from Mid-America can answer the question about batteries. What kind of batteries are these that we have to go to a, a backup of some sort? And talk to me a little bit about natural gas and how that's 100% renewable energy and where that puts every constituent that we have that has a furnace. What does that do for them and how's their changes need to be by 2035?
Um, on the, so thank you, Councilman. On the battery piece, there are a lot of different battery technologies out there. Lithium-ion is the most popular one, but there are other technologies, and they address, they address aspects of being 100% renewable that are, um, important, but, part of the, the more technical piece that makes it difficult, uh, to look at this on just an energy basis. So there are other, what's called ancillary services that need to be provided, um, ramping up and down, ability to control things like frequency and voltage. And so it's different types of batteries that, um, would be used in a final, you know, is that final step to get to 100% renewable, um, on an hourly basis. But, um, for the most part, the, the battery that we have, uh, install, installed at Knoxville is a lithium-ion battery. It has, um, two what essentially look like shipping containers. Uh, and inside of the, the shipping containers are a whole series of, of, uh, small battery cells that, um, when they're all connected together, uh, provide the, the, um, four megawatt hours and, and one megawatt of power that they were designed to provide.
How do you dispose of them when they go bad?
Uh, we have not had them go bad yet. Um, there are some, uh, recycling programs, but I would say, uh, that's probably another area where, um, the, the industry is trying to find improvements.
What's the life expectancy?
Approximately 10 years. Uh, batteries are the type of thing where there's a whole series of small cells inside of those containers, and so after, uh, year 10 or so, you start just gradually replacing, um, maybe a tenth of the battery with new battery. And, um, over, over the course of about 10 years after that, you would have replaced the entire battery.
So do they go to a landfill?
Uh, we have not disposed of any. I cannot tell you where they go. I, I do not believe they would go to a landfill. I believe they would go to a recycling facility where, um, the lithium, uh, would be extracted and, and some of the remaining, um, constituents of the battery may end up in a landfill. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay. And then tell me about how gas fits into this whole equation, since, you know, in the winter months, when it's 2030 below, we use a ton of natural gas to heat our homes. How does this fit into that whole model of the 100% renewable energy?
The, the 100% that we presented on today really just has to do with the, uh, electric supply, um, which also relies on natural gas in the winter. The winter is one of the challenging times for renewables here in Iowa, just because it's difficult for solar to contribute. Um, a lot of, the, a lot, we have a lot of short, uh, short days, obviously, but also overcast days. And so, um, you know, having, having a little bit of access to natural gas, uh, to offset, uh, batteries is something that a lot of other jurisdictions are looking at. Maybe not going to 100% emission-free, but, but allowing some natural gas generation just to avoid the need to purchase such a large amount of energy storage.
Okay. Connie, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of give a comment. Uh, I think we all know that we need to do more, and we need to do it faster. I think it's pretty well-proven. Um, maybe we don't all, but, uh, I think from what Jeremy has brought up, that we in the city had made commitments and, uh, really haven't updated it. So in some form, we need to probably update and get more current as to what our goals of the city are. Uh, and I would be supportive of looking at what we bring forward. I don't know if it'll be exactly what the original resolution was. Uh, but I do know that we have to work with our partners. Our partner, Mid-American, has worked tirelessly, I think, to, to work towards it. And it's just how do we get it to the timeframe that we feel is essential to bring about the energy, uh, conservation that we need and to really help make it more acceptable for what we need to do in today's world. So I just want to give that comment that I'm willing to look at something going forward and to strengthen and be supportive. And I think we also have the advantage now, the federal government, to helping for communities to do that.
Councilmember Gatto, I've got the survey information pulled up. If you'd like me to, to pull that up on my screen.
Yeah, that would be great, if you could.
All right, uh, so this is the executive summary of that recent survey. You can see here, uh, it, the, the beginning of that executive summary touches on the goals that were developed as part of the guide DSM process, uh, and under that second goal here of being a sustainable community. Uh, in summary, the, the highest level of agreement, uh, were on the statements related to, um, whether the city is a good place to live and whether people like the neighborhoods that they, they live in. Uh, and then the respondents least agreed, uh, with the following statement, "The city has improved its greenhouse gas emissions" with only 34% uh, in agreement on that. And there is detail further down, uh, in the rest of the report that, uh, speaks to that on this, uh, page 10 here. So, uh, I'll give you a few minutes to look at that or, uh, ask any questions on that if you have them.
Uh, Council, Councilman Gatto, this is Scott.
Yes.
Manager Sanders, I, you, one of your other questions is how does this compare? We'll have to ask ETC.
Okay, they didn't give us that?
Yeah, to, we'll, we'll find out how this compare, these responses compared to our other similar cities.
Okay. Um, I believe that's all I have. I, I know that it's. I know that it's important to make sure that we have affordable, not only affordable, but reliable energy for our constituents. And some of the numbers that Mid-America had showed us for not only a residence, but a but a small business or even a large business, if we're going to change their, how much they pay on energy, the way that the way that it showed by going to the 100% renewable energy, whatever that looks like, I believe that we better take a close look at that and make sure that that we're doing the right things, not only for our environment, first and foremost, but but also for every one of our constituents in the city of Des Moines. Not 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 the state, but the people that we represent directly. And that's who has elected us, and I think that we need to remember that. I appreciate all the comments from the panelists. Scott, I mean, it's it's 9:20. I don't think that we should dip into another topic. Can we move that to the next work session?
Yes, I just spoke with those speakers, and we need about 15 minutes. So if it's okay with council, we'll reschedule that.
Yeah, that would be that would be beneficial. It's 9:20, and I think we've got a significant council meeting tonight. That I think we want to, if that's okay with my colleagues, I think we'll put that off for the next meeting unless somebody has an objection to that.
So, Joe, if I could, this is Scott again. To follow up on this topic, I would ask council if they want the city manager's office to take the lead in the aspects of any type of resolution that would come out of the conversations. And that way, we, I, you can give your input through me. I can sit down with Mid-American Energy and determine kind of what what aspects of the resolution has have consensus with with the council? Is that something that?
Well, either that, Scott, when we did the Guide DSM, and I was originally part of that through our, you know, priorities when we put that all together. We did that during a similar all-day quarterly work session that we all kind of sat down and Lyle came in, and that's where that's where some of that comes from. And, you know, we don't know, you know, Josh might know what the Biden climate plan is, because this is his job. This is what he does every single day. A lot of us don't have that information. So I think it's first and foremost, we need to have that.
There was just a major, there was just a major campaign. It's on a website. I think a lot of informed citizens know about that campaign, that plan, if they look at it.
So it's a general.
I can send you articles about it.
It's a general campaign. It's not, I mean, it's it's just a general campaign statement. Yeah, okay.
You can read the climate plan on the Biden website, the campaign website, the transition website. There are also a lot of news articles that have covered it. So there are a lot of ways that you can get informed about it. I wanted, and I wanted to point out that, you know, the the action that council passed was to bring, to have the city manager, like you suggested, Scott, the city manager would bring a final resolution by our second meeting in December.
Well, I think we would need more information. That's that's that would be my thought. I don't know the rest of them. I see Connie has her hand up, and go ahead and pop in.
I would support Scott bringing forward the resolution, as we've stated.
Yeah, I would be supportive of that also. I just, I think that, I think we all need to be better educated and and know exactly what this resolution is going to do with our partners. And that includes all of them, not just Mid-America. And our constituents need to be very aware of what type of resolution we're passing and what what's the upside and what's the downside by 2035 for them? Because if the downside is the amount that they're going to pay on their electric bill and gas bill, I think that that needs to be very clear of what they're going to have to do.
Joe, this is Linda, and I would like to add that, you know, when we passed the benchmarking ordinance, it was to help our partners. It said, we're going to help people determine what they can do better. And now we've implemented additional fines. So there's a big difference between fining people and and helping people. So I just want to make that point.
Thank you, Linda. Scott, it sounds like that most of us are in agreement that we would turn this over to you and have that. I don't think we're going to put a timeframe on it that has to be done by the end of the year. I would like to see the Biden administration get in there and actually see what their what their plan is, other than a campaign plan. I don't think we should be going off any, you know, general campaign campaign plan that's on a website. Let's see, once his administration gets in there, once his cabinet members gets in there, and what his priorities are going to be set at nationally, and see what type of national funding that we can get for our partners so we can become better at this. We all want to be better at this. You know, this is something that's that's going to be great for our kids and our grandkids and our great grandkids, and we need to move forward on these things. But we need to move forward very, we need to be conscious of what we're doing and how we're doing it. And we need more support than just the Des Moines City Council passing a resolution. And I think we just need to be very careful about passing resolutions just to say that we did something, because council members need to have this done and want to have this done for for other uses. So, you know what? We've got a, we've got a, do we have closed session today, Scott?
Jeff, are you on? I think he is. I do not believe we do.
We do not. Okay. So we have a, we have a council meeting at 4:30 today. I think we had some great discussions today. Again, thank you all, the panelists that participated in it, and sure appreciate all the great information that was given on on both sides. And thanks to my colleagues for for always a spirited conversation. And we'll see everybody at 4:30.
Joe?
Yeah.
We have a proclamation, and we start at 4:15 today.
4:15, guys.
Got it.
Thanks again. Everybody have a great day and be safe.